Thank you. Okay. So today, our first item on our agenda is Donald Alpert. You're here? Great. Please come forward and sign in. Oh, I got a seat, Alpert.
I was just gonna say.
Yep.
Decide who's gonna sit.
Yep. I didn't, I wasn't paying attention to this. I'm sorry, if you don't mind, before we get sorry, sit down, please. I just need to, um, we need to appoint an alternate to the meeting this evening. We don't have everyone here. So, we have two alternates. How do you normally, how did you normally do this?
We need five people, so...
So last time you had, Alden was seated last time.
Okay, okay.
So you seat the next person.
Okay. Thank you for the suggestion. So Spencer Ruben will sit in for Mark Levine. Sorry for the distraction. So please, tell us a little bit about your application and what your intentions.
So we are applying to the town for variances on a garage that we would love to put on our property. We currently do not have any structure that could house many of those garage needed things, including an automobile, which would be a nice thing to actually put in there if we, if we could. So, but we definitely have, you know, a need for a storage space for outside, and we'd love it to be the size of a garage. So, there are pictures that we've supplied, and we have gone through all of the steps that we learned were necessary, including an A2 survey of our property. And we are in an undersized lot. It's very, very charming, but it's definitely undersized for the district that we're in. And so, if, I don't know if you want to take a look at the map and see what we learned about where, according to be in compliance, our garage would have to be with set, with the variances.
Also too, that this is not a permanent structure. Basically, it's a drop-in unit that goes on gravel, so it's not, we're not digging a foundation or anything like that. It would basically be like from the barn store or clover farms, one of those type of structures. So it's basically a non, you know...
What's the size of the structure again that you're proposing?
We are looking to do an actual garage in, unit of about 12 by 20, and then an eight-foot, what do they, lean-to, they call it, so that it can serve as a little bit of protection for a second car if we need it.
Terry, what kind of a foundation would be needed for a structure of that size?
The building code requires a foundation. This is not the zoning regulation, but this is building code. Foundations for structures that are over 400 square feet.
400 square feet.
So this would be us...
It would be a 20 by 12.
So this is under that.
Would be the actual garage part, and then the lean-to piece is...
But foundations can be a basement wall, it can be frost-protected, it can be, you know, a, a post hole. So, I think that, I think that it's not a, there's not a building code challenge in this.
Okay. I think it's better to talk about it up front rather than after it's been delivered.
So the building, the building code again, I'm sorry, is...
400 square feet.
400 square feet.
And anything over that, you would need a permanent...
Frost-protected foundation.
In your application, sorry, just a few papers. You referenced the previous owners, I believe. Tell us about that.
They did have a garage there.
Right.
There's a picture of that.
That had to be the 10s, probably.
That was what?
Probably the Benworts.
Okay.
And Jimmy Peckman there.
Our town history.
The previous owner, for the past 20 years, was Lindsey...
Collier.
Collier.
Right.
And when she moved in, she found it to be very unsound, the boards, the floorboards. And that structure, from what we understand, had, was cantilevered, and it was just on stilts. So, we would be, that's why we would be moving it forward. And again, if you look on, on, there's a photograph which doesn't show anything in the back, but it's very, very faint, you could see where it was located. And then there's a little map. But it's actually cantilevered over those, over hills. It was. So she thought it was best to just take it down. And so she was...
She was concerned with safety in total.
Yes, that was her concern.
Floors and everything else on it, I guess.
And then she really went on to do a lot of other improvements inside the house. And I think she just never got around to rebuilding that garage, so...
I have a question about the house. The way I read it, it's the original structure was prior to zoning, and the addition to the east side of the house, pre-existing prior to zoning. Now, the zoning went in, well, the, was planned December 24th, 1932, by Clarence Baldwin, who was first saw it in. I was born in 1934, and I can distinctly remember that house. The woman that lived there was Olive Perkins, and she was an elderly woman. There was a slight porch or stoop on the front of the house, and there was no paint on the house. It was quite old-looking, definitely. And I do not remember that east addition being on the house at that time. That's my question.
What was your question?
My question is, I do, I'm stating that I do not remember that east addition, it's really the back addition, being on that house prior to, I was born after zoning. But when I was old enough to go by that house many times, I don't remember that part being there.
Well, we've searched the town's records.
And we find a, an application in 1959 to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an addition in that area in which you're speaking of.
Oh, the, for that addition.
And, and remarkably, the, that zoning board of appeals action was denied with the following statement by the zoning enforcement officer. "Nonconforming lot. I have investigated and find proposed addition will not make the property more nonconforming." And it's a denial. So it took us a while to figure out what that sentence meant, until we located the zoning permit in, in June 14th, 1960. Where they, where, on a similar plot plan, it's not identical, but a similar plot plan. And I'd be happy to share these documents with you. That allowed the construction of that addition.
See, that's, yeah.
So I can, I can only conclude that, that it was denied because...
Didn't need any relief.
I was just trying to figure that out, the double negatives. Right. They determined that it was a nonconforming lot. It wasn't gonna become more nonconforming with the addition in 1959.
So they allowed that because of that, is that why?
They didn't need the variance.
We're all set to go back and put a wrecking ball to them. The addition to your town, oh my god.
No, that's interesting.
So they concluded that by putting the addition on, it would be, it wouldn't make it any more nonconform?
That was the conclusion in 1959.
But the addition was on after zoning.
Yes. She said it was around 1960.
I see.
I, I have a good memory, and I definitely remember that woman sitting, sitting there. She grew up at the house right up, the one that just sold.
The blue house, yes, yes.
She was Olive Sperry.
Olive Sperry, okay. And just the condition, it's, it's interesting because I'm not, well, probably in 1960 at the same time, they must have re-sided, and you can see, underneath, you could see the vertical siding that was originally on there. So it's still there.
I, I did know when she died, it would have been around, probably around that time, you know, previous to that, not too long before.
And if I understand correctly, it passed to a daughter, who then put that addition on. Just interested in the history of it.
I don't know for sure.
Well, the name on it is Janet Peck.
But, anyway, I don't think she had any children, Olive.
Oh, okay.
No.
Said Janet Peck.
Janet Peck?
I know. We're getting into history.
I have a question for Terry. The question we always seem to ask when we, when we talk about zoning, or zoning board of appeals, is there some place that this structure, 12 by 20, could be placed that doesn't require us to make a ruling on it?
Well, I, I think that, that the answer to that is in the site plan that's been prepared. And that the, you can see where even the proposed deck behind the existing house requires a front yard variance. So, if you'd like to have the owners of this house have a deck that they can walk from their house to their deck, a deck, a variance would be required. So as to the deck, absolutely not. It's not possible. It's traditional, you know, to be able to walk from your house straight to your deck. In terms of the garage, I think that, I think it's possible to take notice of those other, that variance request, of the existence of a garage or some sort of accessory structure in the general vicinity of what's posed now.
Yes.
I also think that you have to take notice of both the septic system and the rather remarkable wetlands that are there. And if you could contrast some other interesting thing about this property, is that there seems to be a dispute among surveyors.
That's the solid line versus the dotted line?
Correct. No. No. Well, I guess it depends on which dotted line.
There's one that says rear property line, C note number four.
Yeah.
And there's a dotted line which says end 71 degrees 51.
That's not it. What I, what I believe is that, and we've looked at the adjoining property owner's map, and his plan shows his property ending at the edge of the river, at the Weblog River.
I'm sorry, I don't, if I recall, I was gonna pull that right out. I think it shows it being in the middle of the river.
Okay. Well, that's all right. We'll take it. You know, it's not that wide at that point.
It's not that wide of a river. I'm only saying that because there was a, there was a line that's drawn directly to it, and it's, as I recall, and I'm trying to dig it out now. But, go ahead, you know better.
Well, so, I believe that the large wetlands area that's on the other side of the Weblog River from the property owner's property line would appear to be either yours, or we don't know who owns it. And I believe that this, that your, this present surveyor, in abundance of caution, has indicated the property line where he thinks the property line is. However, I believe that it's easily 50 feet or more towards the river from where it's indicated.
I believe what you're saying is, what he took was a shot from where the old dam was. And I guess what happened was when the dam either collapsed or something, there was a pond there, and then it created this river, or basically, and he was being, like you said, very cautious. Because we called him after speaking, you know, to your agency there, and basically he said, "Look, they don't think that this is correct." He says, "I'm sticking by it if you wanna bring in lawyers or something, that's fine." I said, "Well, I don't need that, I'm just looking to make it right." Because the tax map shows clearly it's three-quarters of an acre. He's saying it's a third. So there's quite a difference there.
So if you don't own that wetlands, I don't know who does. But for purposes of zoning, I think that the request is actually less, is more than it needs to be. Which is the good news. We like to, you know, we like to apply a careful read to these sorts of things. And, so I think that they might not be, for example, the rear yard on the, if, if, if we're to resolve this, this issue, which I do not believe needs resolution, I want you to know.
The owning of it.
Right. But, because someone has to own land. You know, all lands these days, the Indians don't own it, the, you know, the gods don't own it. You know, someone owns land in America today. The government may own it, but I, you know, the only title that we can see where it might vest to is in your property. I do believe that there was a pond there at one time. Just because it's a pond, people own ponds.
Well, even the way the contours, it really, there's sort of an area that makes a natural argument for...
My question then would be, say down the line when we want to sell, or if we sell for a matter of whatever.
Yeah, that would be...
Would that then, you know, for example, you know, when it was advertised, it was three-quarters of an acre, which was, and it said based upon town records. Which again, we have the tax map that showed it, it was three-quarters of an acre. However, the deed said a quarter of an acre more or less. So I mean, which is totally fine, but again, if you're selling it to somebody, do we say that, you know, as far as the town is concerned, it is in the middle of the river? Or do we, you know?
I would be hesitant to give you an opinion of the certificate of title on what you actually own, but, but I'm, but I am interested in having this board know that, that there's, the property that you are seeking relief from likely is your own.
So the question I still have, is there any other place that this, because the variance that was being asked for was only a few feet.
Correct.
Could this be moved a few feet, and therefore, you know, obviate the necessity of being here?
Because of the septic system, I don't believe it can.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. All right, thank you.
So Terry, couple of questions. The whole thing about it's a different foundation, does that make any difference at all?
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever.
You have to rely on your building inspector to resolve those problems.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe it's a structure.
Okay. And there was a structure there years ago?
Yeah.
Which was on a map in 19...
There's actually a picture of it, but you'd almost need a magnifying glass to see it. But it's, it's there.
And, and, and again, our, our, in the interest of a sound, flatter, structure, that was the other reason, because if you'll see, it's, it's really gonna be mostly on a, I would say 99% on an existing flat, solid surface. And this little bit of that overhang will require a little, a little bit of possibly filling in of the property a little bit, in order to accommodate that other little post in the back end.
But you account for all that obviously on here, because of the overhang description here.
The garage company recommends, it's, it's just a gravel base, that there would be maybe six to eight inches of gravel, and then it sits on the gravel base.
Lot of gravel around there.
That's true.
Okay, so who's the septic?
We also did a B1, is it called a B100? So with all, in all, as in all things in, in, houses in septic systems in Woodbridge, when we construct something, our public health code enforcement officers require a, what's called a B100. It's a, it's a demonstration on the part of the applicant that there exists on the property a place that is suitable for a replacement septic system, should theirs fail, which yours is not. And so you see in your, in your, in your packages, a place where that, where that could possibly be. Buildings next to wetlands has, have, have high anxiety because wetland soils do not make up for a good septic system.
Terry, anything out of the ordinary regarding the proposed deck? In your opinion?
For Woodbridge, it's kind of a small deck, I guess, but, so I think it's a modest application.
Terry, you said, this is zoning, obviously, ZBA. It references onsite of wetlands and water course. That's a whole nother issue. Goes through here or doesn't?
Correct. It's not, it's not the only regulatory opportunity here.
Correct.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure. Even though I know the answer.
We actually have left our tags up, in case they need to be flagged on somebody else's property.
Maybe. Maybe, yeah. I like his answer.
It's, it's been very, very, very interesting for the past six months.
Do you have any questions, any more questions?
I'm all questioned out.
You're all questioned out?
It's hard to believe the truth.
Any more facts of, of history?
History. I know, I know a lot about the area. No, no, I didn't know. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, you know, what you're bringing to it historically, because obviously that's part of that.
Well, I lived on Baldwin Road.
Oh, okay.
All my life.
We go by there all the time.
Yeah. That'd be slow.
Well, we, my, I'm from Derby. My husband's from New Haven. His business was in New Haven. So we had passed by this house...
Yeah.
The Derby.
You know, for years and years and years when we lived in Westphal.
Yeah. It's a nice, cute little place.
It is. Very sweet.
I don't believe we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak.
If, if so, they should speak up, I guess.
They have to speak up. I think we're all questioned out, and... I would love to...
I make a motion that we give them the permit.
I'll second that. Motion to approve the application.
So the motion on the table is to approve the application for 197 and Sonia Road as recorded in our zoning packet. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations. Good luck with your steps.
Since we do have zoning, I mean, wetlands to deal with as well, is it possible that we can get a few of the maps that might not be used? Roger, thank you.
You need some yourselves, though?
We need one type, right? Yeah, we need one type.
That's all.
The last meeting we had, believe it or not, was March 14th of 2016. Everybody had a chance to read the minutes. March of 2014, 2016. Did we not get the March minutes in the packet?
January.
I have January.
That's the last one I have.
I'm sorry?
January 11. Yes, that's, that's the one that was with the thing. And the one before that was November. If I'm not mistaken.
Do you have a note?
Yeah.
So that may not be correct.
Right.
I don't think we had a March meeting, did we?
I don't think we had a March meeting.
I don't think we did.
There's an error in the notice, in terms of the reference for the minutes. It says March, but it was actually January.
Okay. So it is, I will suggest that we take a look at our January 11th, 2016 minutes. minutes, for those of us who are there. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
For the discussion. All those in favor? Any other business for the Woodbridge zoning board of appeals? There's some correspondence of some newsletter and things of that nature, you all got. We'll close the meeting, adjourn at 8 o'clock. Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.